We may be deviating from the agendas slightly. We're going to start with approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication? Okay. If we have any public comment that does not refer to the special meeting, now would be the time for that. You gentlemen want to start your presentation?
Let's...
Before we start?
Okay, well, we'll have our solicitors.
Sure. Just for the benefit of the public, what we're here for, I know there was two versions of the agenda floating around this week. One had both the conditional use and the land development on it. We are only discussing the conditional use this evening. The land development application, if they obtain the conditional use and move forward with this project, will be the subject of future planning commission and supervisor meetings. So, we're not going to get into the nitty-gritty of designing stormwater and things like that. Obviously, you can ask questions and we'll tell you if it relates to the conditional use for the land development, and we'll address the land development issues at a later time. So, a conditional use, it's a zoning matter, and our zoning code requires an applicant to present the conditional use plan to the planning commission, and for the planning commission to make a recommendation for the board of supervisors. It will then go to a public hearing before the board of supervisors. And we have scheduled that first public hearing for November 30th at 7:00 in the Fleetwood High School auditorium. So, November 30th, 7:00 in the auditorium. That will be published in the newspaper, posted on the website, so that notice will go out shortly. So, tonight, the applicants, and they may go into a little bit more detail what they're going to discuss and what they're not, but they are only talking about the use. Conditional use is a use that is permitted by the zoning ordinance so long as the applicants prove that they can comply with the criteria that's set forth in the ordinance. So, that's what they're here tonight. They're going to go through their use, their development, the proposed project. Our engineer has reviewed it, so they go through the review letters to make sure that they show compliance, and at the end of it, we will allow public question to comment, both of the applicant and the board. And, at the end, the board will, or the planning commission, will render a recommendation. That may not happen tonight, it may happen at a future meeting, we'll see how far we get tonight. I think one thing we'll discuss is we see this moving forward, we may break, and then the planning commission will discuss how late we're going to go, as we see how this moves forward. But with that, we can turn it over to the applicants to present their case.
Good evening, my name's Greg Gadelman, I'm here on behalf of Maiden Creek Associates. Thank you very much for allowing us to present here this evening. As Eric just summarized, we're here on a conditional use application for a proposed warehouse facility. To add a little more clarity as to what this narrow scope of a conditional use is, we are not getting into fully engineered plans, we don't get into fully engineered stormwater, we don't get into fully engineered highway improvements. Conditional use is all about the use and the zoning requirements that are the specific, objective, and applicable requirements under the ordinance. So, you're really talking about setbacks, you know, total impervious coverage, things like that that are listed, and anything else in the ordinance with respect to this proposed use. So, we have a pending preliminary plan that does have some more detail to it, but this is just the conditional use. It's the first step in a multi-step process. If the conditional use is approved, as Eric said, we come back before this planning commission is running land development, and then we focus on some more of the specific details, types of landscaping, you know, all the different engineering of the stormwater. Those aspects come later. So, this evening, we're here on a conditional use for a proposed 930,000 square foot warehouse facility that will be constructed on Maiden Creek Associates' property, which is just northwest of the intersection of Allentown Pike and Schaefer Road. The property is Zone C2, Regional Commercial District, and as Eric stated, the use is a permitted use, it's permitted by conditional use according to the township zoning ordinance. So, the application was filed, I believe sometime in March, and subsequent to the application submission, it was reviewed by your township engineer, comments were issued. My client's professional consultants and engineers responded and resubmitted. It was reviewed again, and another letter came out, I believe, at the end of September, and the applicant has responded to those comments as well. As we go through this presentation, I'll have our engineer Cornelius Brown from Bowler Engineering walk us through the basics of the plan, the location of the property, the zoning requirements, et cetera, to show you how the plan complies with the specific, objective, and applicable requirements. And then, we will probably focus on some of the review comments as well that the township engineer issued and our responses. I think at this point Cornelius, I need you to grab the microphone in front of me, but Hunter, how close can they get? Oh, okay.
(laughter)
You all right?
I think so.
Okay. So, thank you. So Cornelius, if you could introduce yourself as well to the planning commission and to the public, and then just slowly take us through the overview of the plan, give us more detail on where the plan is, where the property is located, its surroundings, and then let's go into what's being proposed here in terms of the warehouse facility.
Sure. So, my name is Cornelius Brown, Bowler, we are Site Civil Engineering Firm, and so I will provide an overview of the plan.
(inaudible)
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, I'll begin with a little bit of context. A little bit of context, Allentown Pike is located here towards the bottom of the page, as Greg mentioned, the site is Zone C2 Regional...
(inaudible)
Not sure we'll be able to do too much with the visibility of the board. We'll do the best we can.
So, we can certainly pass the board around after we're through with this initial presentation. So, as Greg mentioned, the site is Zone C2 Regional Commercial. The dimensional standards are as of right, meaning the plan as designed complies with all the bulk requirements set forth in the district. The proposed building, which is what you see here in beige, is 930,000 square feet, 3% of which will be devoted to office space, that's roughly 30,000 square feet. We are proposing 212 loading bays, 211 trailer parking spaces, and 530 employee parking spaces, all of which will be located around the perimeter of the proposed structure. We're also proposing 13 ADA stalls along with the 530 parking spaces. They will be distributed with 393 parking spaces in the front and 137 parking spaces at the rear. Also, in connection with the application, we are proposing a total of 135 trailer storage parking spaces, and they will be located here at the southwest corner of the property. So, as I mentioned, the site fronts on Allentown Pike. We are proposing two points of access. One is a full access driveway, which is located to the east, and the other is a right-in, right-out access, which is located further to the west. As Greg mentioned, the full access is aligned with Schaefer, which is located on the opposite side of the roadway. In terms of trucks and emergency vehicles, they can access all portions of the site by utilizing this full access driveway with interior connections that are planned throughout the property. In terms of signage, we are proposing a monument sign adjacent or in the area of the full access driveway, and lastly, we are proposing a burned sidewalk along with pedestrian striping to facilitate pedestrian traffic along the frontage. From a topographic grading standpoint, the site currently drains three different directions: to the west here, to the north here, and to the east over here. And a little more background, Peters Creek is located somewhat off the page to the north. We are planning on public water and sewer. There is a pump station that is proposed. That pump station will facilitate a connection to a gravity line located in Allentown Pike. That will be located here in the southwest corner of the property. We are also proposing a water tank and pump fire suppression system, which will be located in the southwest corner of the property as well. The blue objects that you see here correspond to stormwater management features. We are proposing three surface basins, one located here to the north, and two located on the east side of the building. They are managed release basins, and essentially, the concept is stormwater will drain into the basins, and they have been sized to allow for the drainage to discharge from the basins at a lot lower rate. The project in stormwater design specifically will meet and satisfy both township and PADD requirements, and would like to point out that the current design will go above and beyond those requirements with the addition of a meadow mix, water quality inserts, and additional landscaping to promote evapotranspiration throughout the property. Speaking of landscaping, the, it may be difficult to see, but the green objects that are located along the perimeter of the parking area corresponds to proposed landscaping. We are proposing buffering along the property frontage. We are proposing buffering along the perimeter of the parking area, and we are also proposing buffering along the perimeter of the property. We've looked at and ran calculations with respect to the amount of landscape material that is required versus what is proposed, and I would like to point out that we are proposing 79 canopy trees, 404 evergreen trees, and 658 shrubs above and beyond what is required per code. All site lighting will be code compliant. We are planning on state-of-the-art LED lighting fixtures, which will result in zero uplight, which will minimize glare, and we are also planning on house shields on the backside of the light standards, all of which are proposed at 20 feet and height. So, that's a brief overview, I'm not sure if there's any details Greg or planning commission would like me to speak to.
Cornelius, if you could talk about the land development, what outside the agency permits would be required, not conditional use for the land.
Sure. So, as we navigate through the land development process, we'll certainly work closely with the township professionals. We will also work with PennDOT with respect to all of the improvements planned in the right-of-way. We will work with the Pennsylvania Department of Foreland Protection with respect to NP, DES, and stormwater regulations, also VADDP with respect to sewer capacity, and we will also work with the local county conservation district on stormwater as well.
And if you can tell the planning commission, has the authority looked at the plan for sewer and water capacity?
Yes.
Can you restate the question just a little bit?
Yeah. So, the question is, has the plan been submitted to the authority for confirmation that public water and sewer is available? And the answer is yes.
So, that's a general overview of what's being proposed. Your engineer had issued a review letter that we're happy to go through. The most recent one was September 30th, and we responded on October 11th. Some of those comments in that review letter are really land development oriented, but we're happy to touch on that, or maybe Tom would like to, you know, give his thoughts on what he had commented, and we can do it either way. I don't know what your standard practice is, but we're happy to.
Chuck?
So, I'm going to introduce Chuck Hess, who's a senior civil engineer with Assistant Design Engineering, and did most of the plan review. Sitting in the front is Mike Warre, planner and zoning, and with us is also Peter Terry, who is representing the township on behalf of traffic.
We're going to work from September 30th. Review letter? Yes. Chuck, do you have our response letter?
We did receive your response letter, but we did not take that into consideration for tonight's meeting. So, we have our September 30th letter, which was...
So, when you're done, we could have the opportunity to respond when it comes to the question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just briefly, I mean, this is a substantial project, and of course, Maiden Creek Township has ordinances in place that regulate this type of development. First and foremost, as was mentioned here tonight, is zoning and the conditional use process. You know, the property was zoned for this type of use, but there are a number of criteria that have to be addressed, and I think as was mentioned, we've been through two now stages of reviewing this application in comparison to those standards. Basically, I think, you know, the applicant's done a fairly good job at addressing the requirements, first and foremost. There are a number of things and details that still need to be worked out, and that's what our latest review letter references. In particular, sewer and water service, there's still some details that need to be worked out with that, but of course, the authority, Maiden Creek Township Authority, is the entity that will drive that process. One item that's kind of outstanding, not to get into a lot of detail, but was mentioned that there's going to be a water tank on the site to provide enough volume and pressure for fire suppression within the warehouse itself. I believe the authority's still working through whether or not that tank is actually needed, or if the simple connection to the public system would provide sufficient flow rate and volume. Traffic is another issue. In particular, here in this case, you know, Route 222 is a PennDOT roadway, it is their jurisdiction. The applicant has to obviously obtain the necessary permits to allow the two new driveways or access points that were discussed, and so really, along with that, PennDOT requires a traffic impact study. There was a traffic impact study submitted, our group reviewed that, PennDOT's also reviewed that, and the applicant has a response back into PennDOT at this time. We simply asked that the township be involved in that process, so we can understand the issues and concerns for PennDOT, and make sure the applicant is, of course, addressing that. A little note from the traffic study, the impacts of this development weren't as significant as you could think, and I believe most of that is a direct component of the fact that PennDOT had improved this section of Route 222 with additional through lanes, with traffic circles, and what have you. So, again, that's something that still needs to be worked through the process, and considered as part of the conditional use review, that those items are either addressed prior to a decision on the conditional use, or perhaps conditions of any approval for the conditional use. There were a few minor land-related items that are, I think as was mentioned, somewhat related to the land development plan, but minor in nature, basically making sure that there's a pretty extensive landscaping plan, but at both of these access points, making sure that that landscaping is placed in an appropriate position, that it doesn't obstruct the line of sight for vehicles entering or exiting the site. One criteria of the conditional use is really the architectural standards, and the applicant did submit some renderings of what this building would look like. I don't know if the applicant brought that along, and at some point, he could share that with the planning commission as well as those in attendance here tonight. It's really more of a subjective criteria, but they presented a design on how this building would look, and of course, that becomes part of the record, and they're bound to build the warehouse with that appearance. Of course, the planning commission can provide input to that, and of course, the board of supervisors can eventually, too. The conditional use criteria does speak to a number of different impacts to the neighborhood, to the community, and one outstanding item was, that we felt the applicant did not address, was the potential impacts for sound related to this use being on the property. And that's from a couple of different standpoints, truck traffic, any tractor trailers that are there with refrigeration units that may have engines that are running to keep the contents of the trailers refrigerated, the potential noise generated from any rooftop or ground-mounted HVAC equipment, and a study was submitted, but that came after this last review. We've given it a cursory review, but again, that's something that, the details of which need to be looked at further as part of the land development process. The applicant submitted a geotechnical report. The site was analyzed, considering the geological conditions on the site. It was noted and it's identified that there are potential for sinkholes on this property, so there are some concerns with regard to that, primarily during the construction process. What would be the impacts of what would amount to be a major earthwork needed to develop this site for the warehouse? Just as a side note, it is interesting, you know, the whole length of this building is basically at one-floor elevation, but the ground slopes today, so there has to be some earthwork involved to make that work. So, there is significant earthwork involved in this. Our recommendation was, and actually, it was in the geotechnical study, was for some more evaluation on-site to make sure that earthwork in that construction process has minimal impact on the potential for creating sinkholes, both on-site or anything that might mitigate or, you know, impact others surrounding the site. It was mentioned, stormwater facilities on the site, because of the potential for sinkholes, the applicant is actually proposing to completely align each of these stormwater facilities with an impervious liner, because infiltration can promote or lead to the potential formation of sinkholes. So, as a result, infiltration is required to some degree, not only by the township's stormwater ordinance, but also, I think it was mentioned, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit that is issued by DDP for a project of this size and nature. So, again, those are some details that need to be worked out to make sure stormwater is adequately addressed for the project. And one component of that that we're thinking is some additional measures to help with water quality. In other words, we realize with truck traffic, trails, what have you, there's certainly potential for ending out of impervious cover, pollutants will be washed off by runoff, and how is that treated and addressed so that we don't have any significant impact? I think that's pretty much of where we stand right now, and most of the things I touched on here were related to the conditional use, so far as demonstrating that this use of the property, the impacts are minimal. The design as such, and fully addressing everything will come as part of the land development. That's all I have at this time. I don't know if the planning commission has any specific questions I can try and address.
Thanks, Chuck. I appreciate the summary of your letter. I disagree a little bit on the nature of the requirements that Chuck talked about. I believe the overwhelming majority of them are actually land development oriented, and let me just take a step over. And I'm not saying that to try to avoid addressing the issues, I'm just saying the scope of conditional use, as I said in the beginning, is very narrow. That's right. So, for the first part, with the authority in dealing with the water-fire suppression, that's clearly, the authority is an outside governmental agency. Of course, we have to deal with that. We have to also deal with that from building code issues, so, you know, your fire officials have to look at that. But that's not conditional use. Notwithstanding, we've proposed something, and we will put on testimony at the conditional use to show that we have mechanisms in order to make sure that occupancy of the building is safe. Okay? So, that's one of the issues that Chuck raised. He also talked about the traffic impact study with PennDOT. PennDOT, obviously, is an outside agency, and anything dealing with PennDOT is up to them to review and approve, so that's not a proper subject of conditional use. Notwithstanding, we will have traffic testimony to talk about what type of traffic is anticipated from this facility, and the real standard here is that whatever comes out of this facility under the law is supposed to be what you would normally expect from such a facility. So, the facility's permitted to generate traffic, it's not traffic-free. It's if it generated abnormal traffic, and if that abnormal traffic caused some type of public health or safety issue. And I frame it that way because a lot of times, people look at these new developments and say, "It's going to generate all this traffic." It's not the standard for conditional use. If the use is permitted, traffic is permitted. It's abnormal traffic that's not permitted. And our traffic study, which has been reviewed by the township at PennDOT, shows that there's no abnormal traffic coming out of this warehouse. It's a generally similarly situated type of warehouse. Nothing's abnormal with how the trucks come in and out and what's anticipated to occur. So, that's also, I believe, a land development issue, because it's another outside agency program. The landscaping plan and locations of it, again, there's a very fine-tuned details. What the conditional use standards say is that you provide landscaping in order to mitigate potential adverse impacts, such as noise or headlights from the parking lot. So, you see landscaping here. What that landscaping will look like will be...
Thanks Chuck. I appreciate the summary of your letter. I disagree a little bit on the nature of the requirements that Chuck talked about. I believe the overwhelming majority of them are actually land development oriented. And let me just take a step over. And I'm not saying that to try to avoid addressing the issues. I'm just saying the scope of conditional use, as I said in the beginning, is very narrow. So for the first part with the authority in dealing with the water-fire suppression, that's clearly an authority as an outside governmental agency. Of course, we have to deal with that. We have to also deal with that from building code issues. So, you know, your fire officials have to look at that. But that's not conditional use. Notwithstanding, we've proposed something and we will put on testimony at the conditional use to show that we have mechanisms in order to make sure that occupancy of the building is safe. Okay, so that's one of the issues that Chuck raised. He also talked about the traffic impact study with PENDOT. PENDOT obviously is an outside agency. And anything dealing with PENDOT is up to them to review and approve. So that's not a proper subject of conditional use. Notwithstanding, we will have traffic testimony to talk about what type of traffic is anticipated from this facility. And the real standard here is that whatever comes out of this facility under the law is supposed to be what you would normally expect from such a facility. So the facility is permitted to generate traffic. It's not traffic-free. It's if it generated abnormal traffic. And if that abnormal traffic caused some type of public health or safety issue. And I frame it that way because a lot of times people look at these new developments and say, "It's going to generate all this traffic." It's not the standard for conditional use. If the use is permitted, traffic is permitted. It's abnormal traffic that's not permitted. And our traffic study, which has been reviewed by the township at PENDOT, shows that there's no abnormal traffic coming out of this warehouse. It's a generally similarly situated type of warehouse. Nothing's abnormal with how the trucks come in and out and what's anticipated to occur. So that's also, I believe, a land development issue because it's another outside agency permit. The landscaping plan and locations of it, again, there's a very fine-tuned details. What the conditional use standards say is that you provide landscaping in order to mitigate potential adverse impacts such as noise or headlights from the parking lot. So you see landscaping here. What that landscaping will look like will be part of land development. So the applicant's proposing it, and by doing that, I believe they satisfy the limited scope requirement at conditional use. The architectural standards, we didn't bring the architectural diagrams, but they are on the township's website. Oh, do we have them? They're on the website if you'd like to review them. The standards are subjective. And under Pennsylvania law, when you have something that's subjective, you can't really enforce it. Having said that, you can make recommendations with respect to it. You can look at it. But there's no objective criteria for what it's really supposed to look like. There were a couple of standards in there with respect to what you could see from the road, which I think we've satisfied. Types of materials and metal roofs, things like that. We actually satisfy all of that based upon what we're proposing. So to the extent there's an objective requirement, it's satisfied. To the extent that you're looking at what the building looks like, that's subjective. And I don't believe you have the ability to enforce that. Notwithstanding, we're obviously open to comments, you know, from your subjective architectural taste. And we can take them into account as we report. The sewer approvals, also just like the water, they are an outside agency permit. We actually have Pennsylvania DEP's approval for the sewage planning exemption already for the property. So as far as DEP is concerned, the sewage planning process is complete. And we also have the authority saying they have capacity. So that's not a conditional use requirement. It's a land development requirement, but we have it already. With respect to noise, the reason a noise study wasn't submitted with the application is because your ordinance, Chapter 133, states the township has to request the noise ordinance. Once we got the comment in the review letter, we submitted the noise study. The noise study focused on the potential impacts of this facility on residences in the area. And I believe it shows, it was done very professionally, and we'll have testimony about it during the conditional use hearing, that shows that there will be nothing violating the township's decibel levels in their ordinance on any of the residential properties that are in the immediate area. So we believe we've satisfied that by submitting the noise study. With respect to the geotechnical aspects of the property, we agree, we obviously did the geotechnical study because we agree with the township that you have to look at this site and be aware of where the course conditions are. We've tested every one of these basins, so we knew that you couldn't infiltrate, which is why we proposed lining the basins. And the township's geologist, hydrogeologist, reviewed this application and agreed. Said, "No, you're not infiltrating on the site. You want to make sure you line the basins." With respect to additional geotechnical testing, that comes later. Once we've been able to get a land development approval where we can fix where the building's supposed to go, where the improvements are supposed to go, then our geologist said, "Yes, you want to test in these areas to make sure that it's secure. And if you find any subsidence, how do you deal with it? What do you do in order to create the subsurface structural integrity necessary to support the load of a building above it?" So just because you find something doesn't mean that you can't do the construction there. There's measures you have to take. If that was the case, you'd have places all over Lehigh County, La Colorada, King of Prussia, you would never be able to build on. Clearly, you just need to know where it is so that you can deal with it upfront. And that's something obviously that we will do. But it's a land development issue again. It's not about the zoning and the use. With respect to the stormwater basins and water quality measures, I think Cornelius said we've added water quality measures. Again, that's just like landscaping. It's a technical aspect that gets done in the final designs going through the permitting process. The township reviews it, Conservation District and DEP review it. And clearly, we're going to add whatever water quality measures are required and may comply. We'll probably go beyond that. We've already started going beyond that. Because when you have a site that can't infiltrate, you then focus on water quality to make sure when the water leaves the site, you're not creating any pollution issues. So that's really what happens. DEP looks at it that way. They have a whole worksheet that you do when you can't infiltrate. And they give you credits for all these different aspects, where there's trees and plants and, you know, and taking down spouts and tying them in, things like that. So the township looks at it, DEP and Conservation District look at it. Overall, we think we've complied with all of the zoning standards, the applicable ones that are specific and objective. And at the hearing, we will also put on testimony to demonstrate how we satisfied the general standards under your ordinance. So that's an overview in terms of a response to the engineer's review letter that's pending. And we did submit that response October 11th. I assume the township's going to review it probably before November 30th, conditional use hearing. So we may get another response, another review and another response in the interim. And Cornelius is here too, if you want to get more detail on our responses because it came from Boulder, not from me, so I'm not the full expert. But in terms of putting it in context, those are the, you know, in a nutshell, we don't disagree with a lot of these issues. These are things that will have to get worked out,
We'll be hearing public comment now. Start by Rose, start from front and work our way back to the inside.
And again, if you didn't sign the sign-up sheet when you come to speak, just put your name there, just so Christina can get it for the minutes. But I'll leave this right here.
First row here. Your name and address, please.
Hello everybody, Brian Koker, 224 Longley, Frankland, CBS. I guess I've got two main concerns. One, a huge building behind my house in my home value, but that's probably not what this meeting is about. Two, the PENDOT study, did it reflect the recent downgrade from a two-lane Schaefer Road roundabout down to a one-lane Schaefer Road roundabout? And recently erected signage to indicate that it's a single-lane roundabout? Only tractor-trailers singly can travel through there without regards to two occupied vehicles side by side? I highly doubt that additional sideways traffic coming out from the warehouse addresses that. So from the planning commission, can I please ask that you guys take that back and reevaluate whatever traffic study was used to address that main concern? That's all I have. Thank you.
Do you want us to respond?
I want them to respond along that way if there is a response.
Yeah, Chris Williams, our traffic engineer, can talk about what's proposed.
We have our traffic engineer, Chris Williams. He can respond to what's proposed there in terms of the roundabout. But just recall, obviously, this is a PENDOT call, not a township call since it's the PENDOT road. So PENDOT has to evaluate everything in the traffic study. And they're the ones that have to review and approve it and tell us whether we're consistent or not. And Chris, I don't know where you want to stand. Do you want to stand there? Just introduce yourself.
Sir, Chris Williams with McMahon Associates. We are the traffic consultant for the project. So we have prepared, trying to think, three studies at this point that have been submitted to the township, two studies at this point that have been submitted to PENDOT, I believe. There is a study that's in right now for review, both to PENDOT and the township. So the study reflects the roundabout design as it presently exists and as designed and implemented by PENDOT. However, there is ample opportunity in the review process. The township's traffic consultant, as well as PENDOT's consultant, will look very closely at this. As you can imagine, PENDOT is very proud of their new project. And they are going to make sure that whatever we do on Route 222 does not negatively impact their project. And so they've already told us that this project will go through a very high level of review at PENDOT, both at the local district level and in Harrisburg. So there is plenty of review opportunity in this process to ensure that we can accommodate our traffic and that we don't do anything to negatively impact that which PENDOT has created.
Hello, my name's Timothy. I live on Independence Court. And I want to...
Could be your full name.
Huh?
Your full name and address.
Timothy Timmy, 111 Independence Court, blanket. All right, how many trucks do you, tractor-trailers you guys expect to go in and out of this warehouse in a day?
So, very good question. So in preparing a traffic study, a big part of the traffic study is how we estimate the traffic that will be generated by the project. So we rely on, a little bit of background, just so you understand where I'm coming from. I will answer your question, but I want you to understand the source of the information. We rely on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, also known as ITE. ITE gathers actual traffic data from other similar land uses. So this is not made-up information. This is based on actual studies of other similar land uses. In this case, we are relying on data for a non-sort fulfillment center. That is the type of warehouse that is anticipated. And the ITE organization has compiled data for this type of warehouse use. So based on the ITE data, which again, is based on actual studies, this is not something we are making up. A fulfillment center of this type will generate both passenger vehicles, which are employees and trucks. And on a daily basis, this type of facility will generate 214 trucks over the course of a daily period, a 24-hour period. 214.
214, that's... Now, as I understand the warehouse, it's going to be 200 docks plus 212 plus tractor-trailer parkings and 135 trailer parkings. That means 535 spots?
Could you repeat the question? What space are you...
200-plus docks, 212 tractor-trailer parking, and then 135 trailer parking. It's 535-plus spots parking for tractors and trailers, right?
I'm not checking the map, but that sounds about right.
That's a lot of tractor-trailers, too. All right, so this might add more traffic to busy highway as it is. Since the previous guy talked about the single-lane traffic, you've got the signs there, which is good. I'm looking at how many people go through there that cannot read that sign. I see so many cars by the roundabout, CBS, that are alongside the tractor-trailers, too. Okay? So that's a safety issue. It's not addressed very well. Still a problem in my area, because I live on, right there by the CBS roundabout. And you're going through that roundabout? If I'm going down across from Temerack or Genesis, trying to get across there, I'm in a circle, there's so many cars that do not yield while I'm in the circle. I do not know how many times, I'm almost out of here. So adding these tractor-trailers to this circle is making me think it's more dangerous than where it is. So I'm thinking of the safety of the residents in consideration of approval of this initial use of this warehouse. Thinking of the safety of the residents of this township.
Cliff Panethen, 2 Genesis Drive, Lanham, Pennsylvania. I just wanted to get some clarification on the 214 trucks that we were talking about. Is that per hour, per day? So the load time to load a truck in many facilities is under two hours. It doesn't make any sense that you have 212 loading docks and you're only loading 214 trailers. It doesn't, and you probably have, with the amount of parking spaces that you have, you probably have at least 200 and some employees per shift. Because you need people that are driving onto the facility, plus the next shift needs parking spaces. The math just doesn't make any sense for a sized facility that you're talking about. I mean, I could understand 214 per hour, but it doesn't make any sense for a day. Can somebody clarify that?
Chris can, but this is the standard way you measure traffic impact studies and trip generation. You use the recognized ITE numbers. It's what PENDOT requires and accepts. And then they calculate based off of that. That's how you do your analysis, and Chris is going to steal a microphone from you.
I just want to offer that, again, we've submitted the traffic study now multiple times. And at this point, the traffic estimates have not been questioned by both the township's consultant and PENDOT. So based on the intended use, this is the data. And again, it's not one that, we're not making this data up. This is actual data for other similar facilities. My experience has been, perhaps the reason, the number of bays or truck parking spaces doesn't seem to, doesn't appear to be logical with the amount of truck traffic is, I think it's two different, I think it's apples and oranges, right? So you have trucks coming in and out over the course of the day, but then the onsite operations is different. A truck can be there for an extended period of time, loading and unloading. So the number of loading bays and the amount of trucks coming in and out of the site, it's not an apple, it's not a sort of a one-to-one relationship. So that may be the reason. But again, I can only speak to the use and the amount of traffic that's anticipated with the use. And it has been reviewed and found to be acceptable for this use. We are anticipating 214 trucks per day.
So my question is, why 212 loading docks, not 100 loading docks, not 230 loading docks? What's the thought process behind those? I mean, there's an Amazon facility north of Redding, or Berks County, close to the same size, million, almost a million square foot, that had 87 loading docks. I'm just kind of curious, why are we at 212 loading docks? And you're only loading 214 trucks per day? Or that'll be on the highway per day? It's just something, math doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I think somebody should investigate that a little bit further.
I take that as your comment.
Well, that is a comment, but it's for the board to investigate. We'll go more on the amount of trucks because warehouses I've been involved in, the time to load a truck, you usually want a trailer in and out within two hours or so. With 200 and some loading docks, I'm anticipating 100 trucks per hour on the road, not 214 per day. That's just my thought. And then some of these, Amazon places can load trucks. If they stage the material properly, they can load the trucks in 10 minutes. So that's just, you know, I'm using the two-hour thing, but could be even more trucks on the road, in my opinion. No comment?
Yeah.
I just want, I just want the board to investigate that more because it makes no sense.
I can say this, what we're showing is permitted under the ordinance. So when you do a conditional use, you really actually size your building and your facility to show what your maximum build-out capable is. So you don't come in with less. You show what's permitted and what's allowed. Okay, so that's the answer I would give you at this point. I do think what Mr. Williams said is correct. You're trying to compare apples to oranges. They're not the same.
I doubt that, but okay.
That's your opinion.
My opinion. Air quality, has there been any air quality tests done yet? My thought is, there should be a baseline set right now. And, you know, does anybody know what the air quality's going to be once all these trucks are on your parking lot?
So there are performance standards that are required to be complied with.
So the, the, there are performance standards that are required to be complied with under the zoning ordinance. Those performance standards are actually stuff during the usage that you'll have to comply with, but we will have testimony showing how that we will be complying with those performance standards.
Uh, the other thing is, on your basins there that are in blue, um, once they fell out, can I get some clarification, what happens with that water? You, you're, you're pumping it out and treating it? Do I understand correctly?
So the treatment occurs prior to being conveyed into the basin. So there are water quality inlet, several BMPs that are planned to address and provide water quality. In terms of how the water will be discharged from the basins, based on the volume calculation of rain, whereby we calculate the amount of water draining in. It's a large bathtub. The amount of water it drains out, it comes out at a much lower rate. So there will be no pumping involved with the operation. It'll be gravity flow.
Is that water going to be treated, did you say?
Yes.
As it's being pumped out?
It'll be treated prior to being discharged into the basin, but there is no pumping.
Because we talked earlier about Peters Creek, and that feeds Lagon Alani, which is Redding's, drinking water, basically. And Peters Creek is a, um, a stream, a natural stream. I mean, a concern would be contaminating that.
Yeah, understood, and between the township and PADDP, all of which have standards in place to demonstrate that you are addressing and providing the appropriate amount of water quality.
And in those basins, is there going to be anything to treat to make sure we don't get mosquitoes?
The, we've run de-watering calculations, and the basins will discharge within an amount of time and time period whereby we don't anticipate any issues with mosquitoes. All of this is in accordance with the township DDP requirements.
The other thing is, you know, the 65 decibels that we talked about, that the, the township has as, as one of their ordinances. My understanding is that you will be higher than 65 decibels?
Uh, that's, that's not correct. I mean, we can certainly go into the noise study. It's really more for testimony. But we will show that we will comply with what your ordinance requires with respect to the residences in the area. And, um, that study will indicate, it also takes into account some of the high level of background noises you have on 222 on Allen Townway. So, we will show that it complies. Some of the other issues that you're raising here, again, in my opening statement, they really are land development issues.
And, and they may be, but I, I want-
Yeah.
I want these noted somehow.
And I, and I understand that. And I'm not saying that we don't have, like I said before, it's not that we'll avoid addressing water quality, it's not that we will avoid addressing how the water is discharged. All of that's in the design, the full engineered design of the stormwater basins. So that's not something you do at conditional use, it's something you do at land development, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could we, uh, limit the question period to like three or four minutes? Because otherwise, we're going to be here till midnight.
You guys stop, watch, hold on. I'm sorry, keep it short. Son, okay, Charles O'Warries, 284 West Walnut Street Drive. Uh, first question, what are you going to warehouse?
We don't have a tenant yet or a specific, uh, item of goods that goes through here.
So then why are we doing this process if you can't tell us? We're having a tenant, so we can know whether there will be carcinogens or any type of flammable that could be detrimental to the community. Why are we here?
So I'm, I'm happy to answer. You're not required to designate the tenant at conditional use. This is just about the basics.
Okay, well then I'm recommending to the board, maybe start looking at changing some ordinance to protect this community, everyone here, okay? I'm in third row, alright? Alright, I built new plants, gas-powered plants, schools, hospitals, okay? Shopping malls, I can go on the list. And every single one of them, I hear this when I was at these project managers meetings, in different aspects, in different states in this country, same thing, everything's fine. You got all your testing, you went off the ITE, everything. And then guess what? You know who suffered? The community. You made money, community suffered, and wow, everything's fine. It isn't all about money anymore. This community I watched, I moved 29 years ago from Long Island, New York, to get away from the same thing that's happening here, lease port all over. Residential, commercial building, no manufacturing. Why? Where's our manufacturing? So-
Okay, shut the lights down. Thank you. Third row.
Oh, I'm sorry, nevermind.
We can hear you, but they can't.
Okay, well, I've got a big enough mouth, I can hear you. Uh, my name is Camille Wercolla. I live at 184 Faith Drive. Um, retired second grade teacher, so I've got loads of questions. Um, first of all, I, and I can ask questions, correct?
What I would suggest is, so you stick with three, get, get all your questions down, and then we'll respond. That way you-
Okay, well, the question, my first question is, why here? Why, are we some kind of sacrificial cow that we have to put this building because we have an empty space? It's like my father finding an extra space on the counter, because my mother moves something and he puts his things in the way. Why are you doing this to us? We gain nothing as residents. I gain nothing, but loss of my, um, my property value. Now, you guys are supposed to be, I'm hoping that you were appointed to look for us, but I didn't hear the word resident impact at all. Nobody, you don't care, you make your money, you engineers. I don't even know where you come from. You didn't even identify what your corporation is. We have no, you, you have, we have no idea, maybe you know, but I like to know my residents. As a matter of fact, when I moved in, Cliff and his wife came to my house. We know each other and aren't developing. We don't know who you are. And you don't seem to care. I bet you, you don't even live near a warehouse yourself, do you? Do you live in the shadow of a warehouse?
Ma'am, I would ask you to stick to the merits of the application.
Okay.
As opposed to a town.
Okay, so that does it. So, my question is, how is this going to impact us residents? Can anybody answer that? We, when I first moved here in 1987, we had a stop sign outside of Lake Creek Estates, and that was enough. Then the state decided, let's put in a traffic light, and we still had accidents. And the traffic kept going. As soon as they opened the road to nowhere, the, the, the truck traffic continued. And from what I understand, trucks come all the way from York. This spoke to a gentleman who was a trucker. They come all the way from York without a stoplight until they hit 73. The traffic outside, tonight coming, I was almost hit. The other morning, 7 o'clock in the morning, five people almost hit me, including three trucks going to church. The reason why they forced the roundabouts on us was so that traffic would be mitigated. You're bringing in more trucks, and I agree with Cliff. There's no way that you're only going to have 24 trucks now. Maybe I'm wrong, but I heard someone say that this is one of the biggest facilities in this area. Well, if it's so big, why are we getting only 24 trucks, or 214 trucks, or whatever? You said that some study told you. And I'd like to know what it, how it's going to impact us. Is there any explanation, or do you care about what happens to the residents? Or is it just you're making the money and selling your space? I need, I need to know that. I live here, you don't.
Ma'am, we're here to talk about the specific aspects of this application.
So you either can't or won't?
No, no, ma'am, when I come into municipalities, I deal with what's objective and what's before us. You're not asking questions on that. You're attacking my client and, and my colleagues here. You don't know anything about us, either.
No, you didn't make any point to tell us.
Because we're not here about that. We're here about a proposed use that's permitted under your ordinances. People have rights. You have rights, my client has rights. We are exercising those rights in accordance with what the township has here. We're not avoiding anything, we're not trying to shortcut anything. We are going through every aspect of this process, just like any other property owner would have to. If you wanted to put a deck in the back of your house, you have permits and plans and submissions. I wouldn't show up at a meeting and then say, why are you entitled to a deck? You have a right. My client has a right. So if you were to ask us questions with respect to the plan and the ordinance, we're happy to answer those. But when you ask questions like that to us, we don't have to answer them, okay? So that's where we are right now. We are happy to work with the community, we are happy to work with the township. That's what we do. When people say, hey, the landscaping, maybe there's some more you can do. Hey, the stormwater, maybe there's more water quality measures you can do.
Okay, so I will ask you a question. Why here?
Because it's permitted. Your ordinance permits the use, okay, so-
So, so, so the only reason why you're putting this here is because it's permitted and some other place doesn't permit it?
No. Correct, it has to by law. Every municipality has to afford certain types of uses.
So if that's true, why here?
Because this use is permitted, and there is a demand for this use. We are complying with, excuse me, you asked a question, and I'm answering it. And then I think we should stop because we're using up everyone else's time. This use is permitted by law, my client has rights. Those rights are protected by the same constitution that protect your rights. We have a balancing process, right? So we have to comply with all of the requirements. That's why we're here. We're allowed to put this here.
Ma'am, you're, you're-
Thank you. That's okay, that's okay. You made yourself here. You and your team here make things here, you're clear. I hope somebody thinks the rest is.
Thomas Duffy, 430 Colonial Court. I looked at your, your traffic study, and as you mentioned previously, you're proposing a non-sort facility. And in the study, it said that a sort facility results in about four times as much traffic. Are there any restrictions or anything, since you don't know what your tenant will be, that your tenant on day one or year five doesn't switch over to a full sort facility?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the conditional use process. So if we're presenting a sort facility and it gets approved that way, if the facility changes, I'm sorry, a non-sort facility, if it gets approved and you move forward, that's what it has to be. If it changes to something different, then it has to be reevaluated. Okay, so you can't just come in with a different use. When your use changes, zoning requires it to be reevaluated. So you're bound by what you presented in the hearing in terms of the evidence, testimony, reports, and everything. And then when it gets approved, assuming it gets approved, there's requirements. So you're bound by everything that you've presented. So you can't just do a big switch, if that's what you're worried about. You can't just show up with something else.
Well, because you don't know who it is going to be.
Right, but the, the type of use has to be there, and it has to be consistent with what was approved. You can't show up with a different type of facility.
Okay. Um, my second question is, your land use is based on a 65% impervious coverage, um, but you also mentioned that all your basins are lined. Is that reflected in impervious?
So if I understand the question, you're out. You're asking if these stormwater basins are included in the impervious calculation with respect to the maximum impervious that's provided digitally?
Yes, based on the ordinance that requires land use.
So as of now, 65% is permitted whereby 61% is proposed. I do not know all hand if the basins are included or how they're included in that calculation, but we can confirm that we will be obligated to comply with that requirement.
Okay.
Typically, a non-infiltrating basin is not considered impervious. Okay, so, U M basins all over the place. Some of them infiltrate stormwater, others just act as a detention basin, to use a different word. The detention basin is under, most, if not all, ordinances are not considered impervious coverage. Pavings considered impervious, buildings considered impervious, driveways, drive aisles, sidewalks, that's all impervious. But a stormwater basin is typically not, and your engineer can speak to it as well, they're not considered impervious, they are holding stormwater.
Well, some are, some aren't. Some are considered impervious.
I, I, I understand, but, yeah, I understand.
My question or just comment to the board, in your C2 zoning ordinance, you don't have, you have a maximum impervious, but you don't have a maximum building percent. Many municipalities have a maximum building percent, that building can be no more than 10%, 15%, 20%, or whatever of the site. This doesn't have it, your ordinance doesn't have it for a C2, and the result is a million large building 1%. And, um, just my last thought, if you have any suggestions or thoughts or concerns that we have. Um, for me, concerns would be the noise in the middle of night, or the trucks doing their, uh, their jaybreaky thing. So, if there's any consideration you could be aware of, please, thank you very much for comments.
Jerick Gibby, 267 Long Lake Drive, Blenheim. A couple of things and questions I had is, uh, can you tell us what a sorting and a non-sorting warehouse examples are?
Chris can. So, so a, a, a non-sort facility is really a more modern, uh, state-of-the-art facility, warehouse facility. So these are all fulfillment centers. A fulfillment center, uh, brings generally packaged goods, uh, it doesn't have to be packaged goods, goods, can, can be raw materials, but not necessarily. Um, but what a, what a sort, what a fulfillment center then does is it, they, um, inventory the, the, the goods, and then eventually they're then transported either to an end user or to another warehouse. So that's the concept of a fulfillment center. So a, a non-sort facility is more modern, state-of-the-art. It relies heavily upon technology and automation. So a non-sort facility generally has less employees. Um, a sort facility is a more tedious-type facility where it's manual sorting. So you have more employees, thereby more traffic. So a sort facility is more people-intensive, and it's, it's all about manual sorting. And again, that's not what's proposed here. What's proposed here is a non-sort facility, highly automated as a fulfillment center.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things that, for the board to consider, I looked at the traffic study and the sorting warehouse, and, uh, for example, the traffic generated is 71% of the current traffic volume of Route 73, and 22% of the current volume of 222. And in our conditional uses ordinance, 22111, for example, the use will not generate traffic that will cause undue congestion or hazardous conditions. That's quite a large increase in volume. And it's to speak to the building size, which is quite massive. It also would seem to me to, as in, section nine here, it says, "The use shall be compatible with building sizes, heights, and massing of other buildings in the general neighborhood." That warehouse is 413 times the size of the average Berks County home. So that's certainly not in keeping with character of the neighborhood. Uh, even in section 13, "The use should not adversely affect the character of the general neighborhood, nor the health or safety of residents or workers on adjacent properties in the general neighborhood." You're going to be adding a lot more trucks in that roundabout, even PennDOT says you should not be beside a truck in the roundabout, so the constant flow of trucks, you're going to have to be waiting to enter the roundabout, therefore causing more traffic congestion. And one of my main concerns is our noise pollution, which hasn't been addressed, but we're asking for approval without all these studies being done. And all we're being told is, we will comply, but there's no evidence to back that up. It needs to be in writing ahead of time. I think that's all I got.
Tim Jameson, 444 Cornet Drive-
Jameson, four forty-four Cornet Drive. I don't have the minutes from the last time we met. We had to video over at the township building. I thought we were told that there would be thirty to forty trucks an hour coming in and out of the city. That's just what I kinda remember you being told from the front when we were there the other night. So that seems a little more in line with something that big. Anybody can come up with a problem.
But I, we did not provide that information, so I don't know where you, you got that from.
Chris, it should be in the minutes. Do you want to send me the case, eight, nine, or ten AM, eighteen hours later?
Right, yes. Yeah, sure. So I still wanna go back to the, to the last questioner. Made some comments about the increase in traffic as it relates to the proposed warehouse. And some of those statistics may or may not be accurate, but they were for a, a sort facility. We actually have since updated our traffic study. Our current traffic study only focuses on a non-sort facility. So the, all the, the information that relates to the sort facility is sort of off the table at this point. We're really just focusing on, on the non-sort facility, which has much less traffic. In terms of the peak hour traffic, peak hour trucks, so as part of the traffic study, we focus on the times of day that traffic is heaviest, which is your weekday morning and evening rush hour period. Coincidentally, it's also a time when truck activity is, is very heavy. Not only, not only, you know, mostly with Route two twenty-two. Route two twenty-two sees quite a bit of trucks during the peak hour period. So during those periods, the proposed facility will generate nineteen trucks during the morning peak hour and nine trucks during the weekday afternoon peak hour. So those are the two peak hours, nineteen trucks in the morning, nine trucks in the afternoon. That's in, that's, that's in the highest hour in the morning and the highest hour in the afternoon, singular highest hours. I do. The question was, what are the existing peak hourly truck volumes on Route two twenty-two today? Today, in the morning rush hour period, there are, as counted, three hundred and seventeen trucks on Route two twenty-two. Three hundred and seventeen. And that's in the morning peak hour and two hundred and one in the afternoon peak hour.
So I apologize if this is, if my question is.
Your name, address?
Oh, sorry, Christie Duffy, fourth thirty Colonial Court. I don't know if this question is conditional use or not, but I know that somebody had already mentioned the potential for reefer trucks. So then my concern is, is this a refrigerated building? Because this is a very large building and to make even part of it refrigerated is going to take a lot of ammonia. And this is very close to residences, and so I'm worried about like the ammonia safety. I know ammonia's non-flammable, but it is actually flammable. So I just didn't know if there's a plan for that or if it's unknown at this time.
It's unknown at this time, but please recall that next door to us is a mushroom facility, which probably far exceeds methane and ammonia coming out of there versus what you would get from a refrigerated truck.
I'm not, I'm not talking about ammonia coming out of there. I'm talking about the refrigerator for the building, the amount of ammonia that's stored on site for the building and the potential for a leak.
I, I understand, and we would obviously have code, building code compliance requirements for that if that was the proposed use, but we don't, we don't know yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for your question.
How y'all doing? My name's John Chabrow, I live at one oh-six Spirit Court. I don't know, I like trucks. I've been a truck driver my whole life and these numbers about the trucks don't add up. Like you got two hundred and twelve docks, two hundred and eleven trailer spots, hundred and thirty-five storage spots. You can sit here and talk about the trucks coming in and out there all day long, but there's all, with all those empty trailer spots, there's gonna be dropping hooks. So there's gonna be trucks going in and out of there when there's not lad loading and unloading. You just spent all this money, or the state did, or whoever, on that roadway. We still have head-on collisions there. There's no divider down the road, the circles. I used to live in New Jersey and they don't work. You just change it from a two lane to a one lane for truck and trailers. I work for a major trucking company, I'm a safety manager there now. And, you know, we side swipe cars through there all the time, big trucks all day long. They side swipe cars through there because people gotta get by the truck. We need trucks, but around here, the three hundred and seventeen trucks a day, I could believe that. Nineteen trucks in the morning, I don't see it. I look at the retention ponds, I get that too, I kinda understand that. I don't understand the creek, like the gentleman before mentioned. You're gonna have trucks out there leaking oil, fuel, dumping, you know, reefers out there. If it is a reefer facility, they're running all night long. Where I live, I can hear the street, I can hear the train, you know, but for somebody who lives close to that, a reefer's running all night long and it's ten or more, you know, it gets a little loud. So my whole thing is just, we have so many warehouses in this county. One up there by Walmart, empty. Bunch over there in Hamburg by Tom Schaefer, empty. I mean, how much more warehousing do we need? I mean, by the time we all die, there's just gonna be a bunch of empty warehouses laying around here just rotting away. I mean, I just don't get it, but that's just my comment and that's all I got for y'all. Have a good day.
Hi, I'm Karen Hicks, three three seven Quartersown Drive. And I'd like to know what the environmental impact? We have a great lake that has lots of wildlife, so what kind of studies have been done about the wildlife?
There is a couple answers to that because you're really talking about the habitat. So overall, when you do these projects, you have to analyze when it comes to stormwater discharge. You have water quality standards that you have to meet. You also have to run certain searches, they're called the PINDY search, the Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Index, so you need to know what's out there. So when you do your stormwater permitting, it's all land development, not conditional use. You have to make sure that if there is something that's endangered or special or protected, that whatever you're going to do doesn't have an adverse impact. So when you run these searches, they reveal what we call conflicts. And then you have to reach out to Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission and also to the U S Fish and Wildlife. They then tell you what it is that you have a potential conflict with. And they have all these studies that are done that have identified endangered species within a certain radius. You then have to engage your environmental or wildlife ecologist and specialist to make sure that they run the proper test with the oversight of U S Fish and Wildlife and P A Fish and Boat to determine that what you're proposing doesn't impact any of those species and habitat. Those agencies then review and approve that or tell you you have to do something different and you have to mitigate it somehow. So there's a whole process you have to go through if something gets identified as being there. But you still have, regardless of any of that, you still have water quality measures that we've talked about that have to make sure that whatever's leaving the property is clean and complies with all of the requirements.
So has that study, would that be something, a study would be done? Or it would only be, like, is that prior to a build?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's during land development. So here you're just talking about the use, but during the land development process, when you get into more of the detailed design and engineering, you have to do all of these searches and analysis and make sure, and make, and make, and make sure that there's nothing there. We have done preliminary searches and haven't identified any conflicts. We continue to update them as we go through the process. So, and the township knows it too, because they're running it, copied to the township so they know what is or isn't there as well.
So where you're proposing this warehouse, there's a lot of wildlife trails. Everybody can go out there. First of all, you're not allowed to even have motorized boats on that lake. So to have a warehouse that close to the, to Peter's Creek fishing, but feeds into there. Secondly, those trails, people are there, out all the time. A warehouse, what's the safety for, what's the safety for people who are out on those trails where you're not expecting hundreds of trucks, hundreds of other people? So I think there's an impact on safety just for being out in that general area.
I, I think you're talking about property that's much further away than where this property is.
No, I know exactly where this warehouse is and I know exactly where the trails are and it's very relatively close.
Okay, this property has no connection to trails, it's a C-two commercial.
Right, but I'm saying, but it's going right next to those types of trails.
But there's no traffic leaving the site, it's all internal to the site. So the trucks circle around the site and then leave, they don't go beyond. That area stays wooded on the other side. What direction is that, north? North? North. So.
Okay.
Thank you. No, thank you.